Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 22 River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristy, can we have a roll call please?
Here.
Here.
Cronk.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, now we have approval of the minutes from the November 6th meeting.
I assume.
Oh, go on.
Mr. Morris.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So passive.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to approval of the bills with Mr. Bjark.
Alright, I'll try. Alright, here we go. I'd like to move for the approval of bills of $626,999.99 in four cents, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Alright, I'm done for the night.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Otherwise, we'll move on. And first thing we'll have is a public hearing, so I'll close the council hearing and open up the public hearing on ordinance number 2016-16. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 12.06, a residential parking permit system for Oak Knoll and Groton House addition. This ordinance will add Zone AA to the city code to allow parking on both sides of the street in the Groton House addition for vehicles displaying valid residential parking permits. And it will add Zone BB to the city code to allow parking on the odd side of Oak Knoll Avenue for vehicles displaying valid residential parking permits. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance 2016-16.
Second.
Wow, it's gonna be a competition tonight. Competition. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we will again close the council hearing up, open up a public hearing on a resolution amending the residential parking system on Oak Knoll Avenue. This resolution will activate Oak Knoll Avenue between Cascade Avenue and Crescent Street in Section 12.06.03.0A.4 of the city code making, there will be a test after this, of the city code making them part of the residential parking permit system used elsewhere near the UW River Falls. Does anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing and I'll entertain a motion. I don't know what you want to say.
Alright, I'll do it.
Give it to him.
I move approval of the resolution amending the residential parking system on Oak Knoll Avenue.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Once again, we'll close the council hearing and reopen a public hearing for the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for Seala v. Bistro and Coffee Cottage LLC. Does anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Come forward, please. You just wanna sign in and know your name?
Oh, sign in here. I'm Stephanie Jensen with Seala V.
Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm sorry I said that wrong too.
Well, that's okay.
The name.
I think you said it right.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'll ask her some clarifying questions, which I believe we can do in a public hearing. Ms. Jensen, do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes, I do.
Do you have your current bartender's license or certificate, class certificate?
I do, yep.
And you understand that if there's any alcohol infractions, whether you're on the premises or not, they're your responsibility?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
And was there something you'd like to tell us or say to us? Is there anything you'd like to say?
No.
No, okay. Alright.
Couple of questions myself.
Sure.
One thing that's come to light.
Oh, here, wait, hang on one second. Is there anybody, so is there anybody else in the audience has anything about this, about the license they'd like to say or talk about? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, reopen up the council hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
One thing I've asked a lot of other people in previous years with their liquor license and their establishments is if they're gonna have a boundary. I noticed in yours that you have no fence, no boundaries. I do know from history of the location that your patio is the outdoor area, and there's kind of a step up, and then there's parking, there's some trees boundary of that. Are people gonna be allowed to go beyond that up into the parking lot with alcohol containers?
They are not.
So they're gonna have to stay in the lower area?
Correct, yep.
That's all I need, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for Seala V, I said it right, Bistro and Cafe Cottage LLC.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Or Johnson.
No, she said Johnson.
I apologize.
Hmm.
Been that kinda night.
Yeah. Okay, so, once again, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2016-17. This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city River Falls for the year 2017. This is the second reading disposition. Actually, this is a biannual budget, is presented for review and approval. This budget includes, the fiscal year is 2017 and 2018, and includes all city funds. And Mr. Simpson, our city administrator, will give us a little presentation.
I'd be happy to give you a short presentation. The council received a presentation at the last, at the first reading of the budget. I'll just give you a little bit of a revised presentation. I'm happy to present the budget. Appreciate the council's work at the workshops and also feedback that you've provided staff one-on-one and also at various committee meetings and advisory groups. We think we've got a budget that continues the goals of the city and will leave us in better shape next year than we are this year, which is our goal each year. Just a reminder that the folks get one property tax bill, it has a number of taxing jurisdictions. About forty percent, or forty cents out of every dollar is the school district. City, including the tax increment, about thirty-four cents. And then the county, depending on which county you're in, averages between the two about twenty-one cents. Tech college and also state forestry tax. So what does it look like, what's it gonna feel like this year? Best estimates based on the tax credit information that we have from the state and all of the various levies from the other taxing jurisdiction. As you know, we've got two counties, so it's a little bit different between the two. This first slide is the blended. So this is $180,000 assessed value house. In 2016, it was about 37.24, it should be about 35.56 in total. City portion did go up slightly on average with the tax credits, portment, TID changes, and the county and the school district levies. Most people will see a slight decrease in their overall tax bill. Pierce County, this is kinda what Pierce County will look like. Just over $4,000 and new tax bill be around 3,900, so about $100. St. Croix County because of the, primarily because of the tax credits, the state tax credits, a lot of credit and other credit that's on there now, that actually wasn't as much in 2017 as it was in 16. So there'll be a slight increase. And it is interesting to note, obviously, the difference between Pierce and St. Croix County. There's just different, there's more value in St. Croix County for the county to spread their taxes over, and there's significant, significant more amount of sales tax in St. Croix County. So each jurisdiction gets together and determines what they need for resources to fulfill their mission each year. All those are set separately. We tend to be one of the last to set our levy based on our calendar. We use our strategic plan to kinda direct what resource we're gonna spend and the priorities that we have for the year. You put together that fiscal plan, then the two-year budget guide, and then tonight we're kinda doing the, setting the property tax. And this is just a slide that kinda shows how that rolls through. So we're at the last step of a many-step process. The council's approving the two-year budget, it's about an $83 million plan in total. Fair amount of that is purchased electricity, which, you know, is kind of a expense and then a revenue back. The council will have to appropriate a second year of levy. You are approving it by functional area and fund, and you're giving authority to staff to implement the plan. The levy that you're approving for 2016-17 is $5,735,000. And we levy those taxes across all taxable properties in the city. The themes in the 2017-2018 budget are emphasis on direct service, positions that are directly servicing the public such as water, public works, and police, and also we've made some enhancements in ambulance. And we're also looking at succession planning, we know we've got a number of planned retirements, so in some cases we're hiring folks in to give them maybe a six-to-18-month overlap with the successor position. Or in some cases, we might have two people in a position, so we've hired a third person in, knowing that one of those is gonna retire. And we'll go back to that kinda two-person staffing after they've got a chance to have a little overlap. We're gonna continue the maintenance of existing infrastructure, there is significant infrastructure investment, and we do that primarily with ongoing revenues, although there is some borrowing to do that. And then we have a number of major projects and efforts, including implementing Glen Park Plan, working on the Kenny River Corridor Plan, finishing up the power plant substation, which I'm not sure if the transformer showed up yet, but the pad is out there in Port, so we'll have a transformer coming next week. The North Interceptor Sewer, which that, last night's UAB, they accepted their consultant's recommendation for a route, so they'll keep working on that. That's to provide gravity, sanitary sewer to most of the north part of the community and eliminate the lift station by the river. We'll continue our corporate park development, which at this point primarily means paying the bills. We've done a lot of the construction, but now we need to start paying the debt service on that. And then we'll continue significant community development efforts. There continues to be lots of interest in the community, including potential new subdivisions, new multifamily housing, and some commercial, and clearly we've had good economic development, industrial and corporate park development. This kinda shows how our levy is doing. So obviously, we've had a good amount of net new construction, so there's, this isn't all just value increase, meaning the same houses are just worth more. Obviously, our community has been blessed with a fair amount of new construction, and that's also led to an increasing value, kind of as we go towards a $1 billion value community. City budget is made up of a number of funds. We tend to focus on the general fund because that's where most of the levy goes. But again, an $83 million budget, the levy in an annual basis is about 5.7 million, so on that $83 million two-year budget, the levy portion is about 11 million. So obviously, taxes are a small portion of our overall revenues. Most of our revenue comes from the enterprise funds and special charges. Enterprise funds are the ambulance, water, wastewater, electric, stormwater. This is not expected for you to read everything, but kinda shows the various funds that we have within. This is all included in the budget document. This is a quick pie chart. Again, now we're focusing back on the general fund, so a small portion of that $80 million. But the portion that's primarily funded with property taxes, you can see how those property taxes are put to work. Significant investment in public safety, public works, general government, and then you have cultural recreation development and other things that we're spending money on. But primarily, a good portion of the core budget is public safety, public works, and the general government, elections, and all the other things that go along with that. We've outlined some of the costs that are included in the two-year budget. Now, some of these projects are more than two years, so this isn't the whole project cost, this is just what's in the two years. So you can see making significant investments in Glen Park, the power plant substation, the Kenny Corridor planning effort, planning for future public safety facilities. That includes both a study of the space needs and also some money for land acquisition. Should we identify a need that needs more land, then we'll have the money to do that. Significant investments in technology for, primarily in overall end-user servers, backend PCs, laptops, that kinda thing, but also in additional technology throughout the organization, video cameras and things like that, video services. The North Interceptor Sewer, you can see that what the two-year budget is for that, that's a pretty significant project. Most of these projects are paid for with user fees or revenue from that. So the North Interceptor Sewer is obviously a sewer, primarily sanitary sewer revenue. There's also some stormwater money that would be part of that project. And something like the power plant substation is entirely funded with electric revenues. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I think we've hashed out a fair amount of the priorities. Appreciate the difficult decisions that the councils had to make. We don't get to do everything we want to do, but you've done a good job identifying and relating the community needs to staff, and we think we've tried to translate that into a budget document, and we'd ask for your approval.
Well, seeing as we're still in a public hearing, I'm gonna see if there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about the budget. Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance 2016-17.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to the consent agenda. First one is acknowledgement of the minutes from the utility advisory board from 10/17, the historic preservation commission from 10/13, the business improvement district board from 10/11. Six is a resolution approving state trust fund loan for the snowblower. This resolution would approve a loan application for $112,500 to finance the purchase of a 2016 La Rue Model D50 snowblower for the public works department. The city council approved this purchase in March with the expectation of the financing in the future, which we're gonna do now. Seven is a resolution approving state trust fund loan for Sterling Pond's Phase II. This resolution would approve a loan application up to $1.1 million to finance the construction of improvements to the Sterling Pond's corporate park. There again, this was something the council approved, the construction contract in July of this year with the expectation of future financing. Number eight is a resolution approving 2017 and 2018 contract between the city River Falls and the city River Falls Police Department's Employees Association. This resolution would approve the 2017-2018 contract between the two parties. Members of the association and the city administrator have reached terms for a mutually agreed upon two-year contract. Number nine is a resolution regarding purchase of well number five, variable frequency drive. This resolution allows the city staff to hire Connolly Industrial Electric in the amount of $17,575 to complete the motor change-out and electrical communication upgrade. This upgrade provides benefits to our customers, energy cost reductions, and efficiency incentives. Does anybody wanna poll anything? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's see, ordinance number 10, or ordinance 2016-18, amending Section 10.12.03.0 of the official parking control maps. This would be the 400 to 500 block of West Maple Street and the 800 block of East Cascade Avenue. This is just the first reading. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Move on to number 11 is a resolution regarding purchase of community solar power shares for city buildings. This resolution would approve the community solar subscription plan. This plan mutually benefits the city River Falls, new participants in the program, and WPPI Energy. And I think Wes Arnett is here to give us a presentation. He's our, he's our senior energy services representative from WPPI.
Alright, thank you Mayor and council, thank you for having me here tonight. Again, my name is Wes Arnett, I'm the WPPI Energy Services Representative, serving River Falls. We're coming up on one year since the community solar garden has been energized, and I wanted to present a solution that'll address an issue that we were finding with customers that are wishing to subscribe to the program today and then also into the future. So I'll start with a little background as far as where we currently are with the program, why that issue arose, and then opportunities that we find available that will, we can propose action to move forward. So we estimate that the annual energy credit that a customer would get per share would be about $31 per year. And as you can see by the chart on the screen there, it varies based on the season and how much sun we get. Currently, we are at about $28.50 through October, which is trending right on track, even though we had a couple of inverter issues that we needed to find a solution for. So unsold shares, shares that are not subscribed to date, would not have received this energy So as far as subscriptions go, there are 190 shares that are currently subscribed, so those shares have received that credit through today. TW Equities and Winfield Solutions had a total of 270 shares as part of their developers' agreements, but as those facilities are still under construction, they have not been subscribed formally to an electric account. So the 190 shares are the only shares that currently have received that energy credit out of 810 total shares. So the issue that we found is these particular customers with the reserved shares, the committed shares, and also customers that may wish to choose, or choose to subscribe today or in the future, would not have that energy credit. And basically, any customer, whether they signed up before we started generating electricity or even five years into the future, the agreement is set up to end at the same date, 20 years from that initial date of commercial operation. So there's the concern, is that as we proceed forward, customers would receive less benefit. So naturally, we'd be looking for a solution that would benefit the customers, address that issue, and would work with the city and utilities and also WPPI Energy. So the options we looked at, continue status quo, and then we'd continue to sell shares at a fixed price and that value of energy credit would drop, so those customers would somewhat get the short end of the stick. We could kinda redesign the program and pursue Public Service Commission approval of a redesigned program. And then we also are looking at an option that the city would purchase the shares, and the energy credit would flow to the city, and those shares could then be turned around and transferred to customers in the future, allowing the full energy credit from the beginning of production to be passed to the customers. And WPPI Energy does have a zero-interest member loan that we also looked at. Staff figured because of the short-term nature of this process that that might not be the best approach. Expanding further on the city purchase option, so there would be 620 shares that would be purchased, so those are the uncommitted shares as well as those that have been reserved. $567 each, so the total purchase would be $351,540. Those subscriptions would be placed on three city accounts, and WPPI would issue a grant in the value of that energy credit going back from the point of moving forward with this process. So we'd backdate that energy credit so that everybody would remain whole on that. And then as shares get transferred to the retail customers, they would pay a prorated fee, which would basically be the $567 cost minus the value of the energy credit to So once again, the main benefit would be the customer receiving all that energy credit that they should be entitled to. And this is ultimately made possible through that grant from WPPI that would kinda backdate that energy credit. And this method would not require going to the Public Service Commission, since the tariff does allow for customer-to-customer transfers of subscribed shares. So ultimately, it would provide the city and the utility flexibility and control as we move forward and seek to get greater participation in the program with new customers. So the shares that would be purchased, I mentioned three city accounts, we'd be looking at the city hall of this building, the wastewater treatment facility, and the ambulance facility. Once again, WPPI would issue the grant and the value of the energy credit. And then as TW Equities, Winfield Solutions, and additional customers come online, then those shares can be transferred. Again, we view this as temporary. The 270 are already allotted. We're looking at another 100 or so shares that we expect to be transferred or sold in the next few months. And ultimately, in the worst-case scenario, if there are shares that do not get transferred for some reason, the value of the energy credit moving forward would be greater than the purchase price. So it is a long-term return, but that value is there. So ultimately, staff is requesting approval of the resolution to purchase community solar shares for the city buildings. So take any questions if you have any.
Real quick, what would happen if the city wouldn't purchase them? I know it might be a silly question, but what happens to them?
Yeah, if this plan does not move forward, essentially, we'd be looking at trying to sell these shares and transfer them to customers at that full value, or full purchase price of $567, and we'd lose the ability to transfer that credit. And I'm not sure what, you know, WPPI staff, we had conversations internally as far as if this were to move forward, that grant would be there. We might have to go back to the drawing board as far as how long can that grant be available moving into next year and what that might look like. So ultimately, this gives us a tool to work with customers and try to get all the shares out to retail customers.
Yeah, so I follow that, it'd give us a tool, but what would happen if the city wouldn't do it? What would, what would happen? Would the panels close down or just...
No, currently, the unsubscribed shares, that energy is part of WPPI Energy's portfolio. So the energy's still being generated, and it's still being part of WPPI Energy's portfolio, but it's not flowing back to customers as an energy credit.
So the value leaves the community rather than staying here?
Yeah.
Well, and it also effectively, if I got, if I understand this right, Wes, it reduces the return on investment, their ability to recoup their initial investment shrinks every year.
Correct.
So they're not gonna be able to recoup their full $536.
Right.
So they have less years to recoup that over.
It makes the panels less attractive.
Yes.
For people...
for people to buy as the timeframe shortens to recoup that cost.
Right.
Is this because they're just not selling, or because people are recognizing the loss?
Well, ultimately, we expanded the project initially to get greater economies of scale. We initially proposed a hundred KW project, which we would have pretty much be fully subscribed at that level. We made it bigger to be two hundred and fifty KW, which made it slightly more challenging to fully subscribe it. And then the other thing is, we found the greatest interest is with the businesses in the Sterling Ponds Corporate Park. So this allows that flexibility as we have additional businesses looking to site there.
And I have a second question. If the city takes over this process, is that gonna add to our workload of selling? In other words, if somebody does come along and wants to buy, is that gonna create more work for us?
It won't create a lot of work. We're currently in the process of trying to sell these anyway, so the sooner we do that, the better off we are. And I just wanna clarify, the city was never required to buy these, this is an option for us. We think it's a good option so that we can get the rate of return for people that matches up the credit, so.
Wes, I have a follow-up question with something that you said. So you said that the potential customers or businesses out in Sterling Ponds find it of interest or worth, besides us giving it to them as an incentive to build their, why do they find value in having, being by a solar garden, or being the, what value do they have besides that return that we are using for incentives?
Wes is looking at me, so.
Over to Scott. No, I think...
Directly, I mean, Wes talked to a number of the same customers, though, with a lot of our energy efficiencies, but there's many reasons that people find the solar garden attractive. So if you talk to the CFO of the company, it might be one answer, or the CEO, it might be a different answer. And then we've also found that when we're talking to the sales folks within that company or the VP of Sales, they like it too, because their customers are starting to demand some, I wouldn't say chain of custody, it's not anything official like that, where they wanna know that the part was produced with solar energy or something, but it's all part of their, when they come and build a facility in River Falls, they do that for a reason, because there's an image thing, they feel proud to bring their customers into those facilities here, and it's another thing that they can say, yeah, and we're part of that solar garden, you know, we're getting renewable energy, we've subscribed to the green, you know, they don't have to do it through the solar garden, they can do it through our green blocks, and many of them do. So it's, there's a number of reasons that they've identified. Nobody has said we're doing it because we can make a bunch of return on the solar panels. However, a number of the companies have talked to us about, things are going well now, they can afford to buy the solar panels, they buy the solar panels, and now they've got a credit on their electric bill for the next nineteen years. So things don't, if sales dip or something doesn't go as well as it is now, they'll still have that credit every month for the next nineteen years on their bill. So the CFOs kind of like that idea, that it's kind of putting their money now to work later, but obviously, they could invest it and make a better return if they're just trying to get a return. So some of it's marketing, some of it's customer relationships, some of it's personal ethic of the ownership team, some of it is, in the case of corporate owners, it's strategic vision, it's their ethic within the corporation that that's what they wanna do, they wanna be a part of it. So it's, I don't know if that answered your question, but
No, it does.
There isn't any one, every conversation we've had has been a little bit different, the motivations are a little bit different, but we've, you know, it's been a good thing overall, from the corporate park perspective, the corporate tenants have been really happy with that option. Because a lot of them have had in their dream that they would put them on their building or other things, and there's a number of reasons why that doesn't always pencil out as well as they hope. And this way, they can just say, all right, I wanna spend fifteen thousand dollars on panels, how much can I get? Instead of, you know, they have to buy two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth for their roof. So it's a good thing. I mean, it would be nice if they subscribed faster. Part of the reason we wanna pursue something like this is they're not, they didn't sell as fast as we want, but the interest has been, I'd say, about where we thought it would be. So the number of people that we have involved right now is pretty high. There's a lot of people buying one or two panels. We haven't had as many people buying ninety, or the maximum, by the way, that you can buy is two hundred and thirty-eight, so we're still looking for that first two hundred and thirty-eight panel customer, but it's all different reasons.
Now, maybe I missed this too, is this a cash outlay? But it's not budgeted, correct?
This would be an asset of the city, an intangible asset.
I see.
Isn't that great? So, yeah, it would be a balance sheet item.
And Julie, is that two thousand sixteen or seventeen do we expect that to be?
I think two thousand sixteen is when we're all counting on it, yeah.
So when you get to the financial statement, you'll see that we're okay.
So being just on the council for six months or whatever, going backwards forward, do you think we overbuild the number that we did, we should've maybe went less, or do you think in the future, boy, it's, Jeff, we're just in the future, we're going to be doubling this up in the next five years and building more solar panels? What's your vision?
We haven't had a whole lot of discussions about whether the scope would change internally. I think we don't believe we bit off more than we can chew, but we almost bit off more than we could chew. So it probably is about right in the end. I think the economies of scale, if we didn't do that many panels, the cost of subscribe would have been six fifty or seven hundred dollars, and then the payback period would be pushing right at twenty years. So we, you know, the reasons that we, I guess collectively decided to go forward with it are pretty valid still today. We probably would've been able to sell the, what we sold now, even if it was higher-priced. But now, where we get to the point where we're trying to finish it out, you still need to have that cost benefit, which we wouldn't have if we had a smaller array. On the other hand, if we had a smaller array, we wouldn't have any left. So this allowed more participation, which I think was one of our big goals, is to do it. It actually went faster than we anticipated as far as the construction and getting everything going, so again, we didn't, it's like our salespeople didn't have enough time to pre-sell it because it was done up and running. There wasn't any problems with the connections and getting it energized or getting it, we didn't have a supplier problem with the solar panels. Some of the things we were worried about didn't happen, things got delivered and installed and away you went, so. I don't know, any other thoughts, Wes or Kevin, you have thoughts about...
You know, just for perspective, two hundred and seven panels, once TW...
Forty-seven percent.
I think it's pretty good.
Wes, if I could, you also support New Richmond, correct?
Correct.
Now, if I remember right, when this project came out, there was only two communities in WPPI that did this, us and New Richmond.
That's correct.
And I'm certainly not trying to play keeping up with the Joneses with New Richmond, but can you share with us how many panels they put in and how many panels they've sold to date?
Yes, the project was equivalent in size, so basically duplicated projects, and they have sold about one hundred and sixty shares to date. So the one ninety that are locked in is greater, and then you add the commitments and significant...
You know, those one hundred... How many of those one sixty or...
Fifty shares were purchased and were split between three buildings in New Richmond Utility Facilities.
I would echo what Kevin said, and that is, you know, three or four more ninety-panel purchases by companies out in Sterling Ponds, and we're done with this project, so I don't think it's gonna take that much longer to finish it off.
Just for the record, this isn't something that we're planning on sitting on, this is, we still wanna turn around these, it isn't the city purchasing solar panels to pay off a debt that we incurred.
There's been no relief provided to our sales team by this resolution, so the goals haven't changed and they need to get going. I mean, the caveat, we gave you the caveat because we want you to understand your investment is sound, meaning if we stopped tomorrow and said, yay, we're not gonna do any more work on this, the city will recoup its full cost through the credits without any difficulty. But we're having a strategy meeting in a week and a half to get the sales team back together and say, how are we getting all of these sold? Because the goal is to get these out in the community to people who wanted to buy them. So we're hoping there isn't any room left for city purchases, even though a few city purchases would be fine. I think the library has, did the library foundation buy two panels or something? So there's, technically, there's a couple city panels already in part of that one ninety, but not the fifty that New Richmond has, but so we're doing okay. Could do better.
Yes. Anybody else have any questions for Wes or Scott on this? Okay, and I will, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution regarding purchase of community solar shares for city buildings.
I'll second.
Any more questions or comments? Now, seeing as this is an unbudgeted, that isn't on the budget, do we have to do a roll call on this, or... Okay, we'll do that. Kristi, can I have a roll call, please?
Bjork.
No.
Odine.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Kronk.
Yes.
Biersd.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to the administrator's report. If anybody's got any questions for Scott, or Scott, if you have anything for us.
I would just wish everybody, including the city employees and all the residents of the community, a happy Thanksgiving. The River Dazzle event is November twenty-fifth from one PM to seven PM, and the River Dazzle Parade on Main Street is six-thirty PM. Our Holiday Light Exchange begins on Monday and Tuesday, so we expect to see a lot of visitors to City Hall between nine AM and seven PM on Monday, and nine AM and five PM on Tuesday. We also want to give people plenty of notice that save the date Thursday, December eighth, from six-thirty to eight is an open house and community kickoff for the Kinney Corridor Project. So we'd be welcoming people to the library to help us explore, understand, and engage about the Kinney Corridor Project.
Okay, anybody have anything for Scott? Okay, we'll move on to the comptroller's report for October.
For October of two thousand sixteen, general fund revenues through the end of October were nine million three hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, or ninety-seven percent of budgeted. Revenues in October include one hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars in quarterly transportation aids and thirteen thousand six hundred and thirty dollars in building permits. Expenditures for the same period were seven million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand two, seventy-eight two hundred thousand two hundred and ninety dollars, or seventy-four percent of budgeted, for a net of revenues over expenditures of two million one hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thanks. Okay, next, I'd like the council to look favorably on my appointment. I'd like to appoint Kevin McNiff to the EMS Advisory Board. He'd be the, he would be actually our Prescott liaison that would be on the board, so I will entertain a motion on that.
I move... Mr. Mayor, I approve, move for the approval of your appointment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we'll move into closed session. Per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five-one G for the following purposes: conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit, the Board of Appeals' decision.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess into closed session.
Second.
Kristi, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Bjork.
Yep.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Kronk.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Watson.
Okay, we are in closed session.